A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form. Moment of silence.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Warple.
Here.
Raichos.
Here.
A present, one absent. So next up is the mayor's address.
Good evening, council. Obviously, I'm not the mayor. For those who don't know me, who are maybe watching online, I'm Scott Miller, the chief of staff. Mayor sends his regards, but could not be here tonight. So it seems like it's been a long time since we last met, but it was, it's only been a couple of weeks. But since that time, the new Gateway Station has come online. Many of you got to go out and see it. It's amazing, excited for the Westlake corridor to open up. It'll have five direct routes to Chicago each morning, five direct routes from Chicago back to South Lake County each afternoon, and many intermediate routes where you can get off and go on to the traditional east-west train. We had the pickleball ribbon cutting at the Gene. Several of you were there. It's been packed ever since. Just the first three days, they had 308 new signups for pickleball in three days. You know, just great coming in businesses. The location is perfect for that and very exciting. I stopped by there this past weekend, too. Every court was full. It's an exciting time at the Gene. We had our Veterans Day parade and ceremony after that. By all accounts, people were telling me, it was the biggest turnout from the community that we've had for that. So we had, I believe, close to 60 different participants walking in the parade. So again, another highlight for the city. That night, maybe apropos, with the elections coming up, we had the Hammond Boxing Club have a match at the Civic Center. Again, I got to see several of you there, and we got to see our youth compete against other boxing clubs in the region. It was a really great turnout. Looking forward to a lot more events at the Civic Center coming up this year. We survived another election day. Congratulations to Lonnie Randolph and Carolyn Jackson in re-winning their seats, and Morton alumnus Frank Mervan Jr. for winning his seat. And I'd also like to wish good luck to Melissa Guerra and Evangeline Stanford as they lead the school board moving forward. Councilman Warple, myself, and Ann Taylor from Economic Development traveled to Chattanooga last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday on a One Region trip. A couple of highlights to share with the council. I was excited to learn about quantum computing because you may have heard, we have that already scheduled to come into our downtown. That Purdue is going to be taking over the, I believe, the dialysis center right there, 40,000 square feet, and adding quantum computing. And without trying to get real technical, what quantum computing is, is to be able to take really large, real-time data sets and process them. A traditional computer just does one thing after another really fast. This is to take a lot of inputs, like maybe all of the regional traffic in Chicagoland at one time, and be able to optimize everybody's routes. Or all these different data points for the weather and be able to, and actually have a real prediction of the weather that wasn't previously possible. So that's already, that's already scheduled to come into Hammond. Like, that's already coming. So that's with the Purdue initiative in the downtown. Excited for that. And there's plenty more I could share with that. I'd be happy to talk to you about what they're doing well in Chattanooga. It was a testament to a, to a community, though, that was working together with all their resources to move things forward. So exciting about that. Now, moving forward, a couple of things, events for you to be aware of. On November 18th, at 10 o'clock, on 222 Douglas, we have a ribbon cutting for the Culture Barber College. Again, on 222 Douglas on November 18th, 10 o'clock. Later that day and that night is the grand opening of our new $70 million YMCA. So I know some of you are coming to the ceremony that night. If you still want to come, and you just let me know, and I can, I can get you on the list. But I've got to tour it. Many of the staff here have been able to tour it. It's amazing. It's going to be a real blessing for the community. We are actively working with them to get an employee discount for all the Hammond employees. We pitched in pretty big to make that project happen, and we feel like that's one of the ways we can help encourage participation and support the, what they're going to be doing at the Y. We have our annual tree lighting ceremony on November 29th on Black Friday, 5 to 7, here at City Hall. And then on Saturday, December the 7th, we do have our Hammond Holiday Parade, the same route we've been using in the past. 15 minutes prior, we will have a Santa Sprint down Indianapolis Boulevard. And then you may not know about this part, at noon afterwards downtown in the HDC hub, they will be having a food fest. We've, we've been cultivating, we have a commercial kitchen in HDC downtown, and we have a lot of food vendors that are going to be having their products for people to try. So the idea is come for the parade, and then if you want lunch, head downtown, hop into the HDC hub, and try out some of these locally sourced foods. At the next meeting, I, you're probably wondering about collective bargaining. I know the mayor always gives an update. I'll just say that we're progressing very well, and I, with respect to mayor, since he's not here, I'll just say that I do anticipate you will have one, if not more, collective bargaining agreements for your consideration at the next meeting for approval. So really moving forward with that. And also some exciting news about the data center expansion up in the first. So both of that should be for the next meeting. All right, that concludes all of my updates. I do have, if the council has questions about Homebound, when we get to that section, I'm absolutely prepared to talk about it. So, all right, thank you very much. Or any questions from anyone.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
As you said, Mr. Miller, we took that tour to Chattanooga with One Region. I've been a member of that now for eight years and have toured a lot of spots that started, I guess, as an organization. I was asked, what do they do? Started as an organization to spur development and cooperation around transportation. And the thing, other than the very insightful quantum computing thing that was over my head, but whatever, the thing I noticed on this trip, and maybe you can elaborate on it some, is
Yeah.
A lot of what the successive, they, successes, stories of redevelopment around the train that we've seen over the last eight years, but especially on this trip, Hammond is doing already as far as getting, you know, economic growth downtown. And I know a lot of these cities, they bring the universities in the area downtown to spur growth. And I think we were in the Chamber of Commerce building down there, and directly across the street was a carbon copy of the Calumet National Bank building that is being redeveloped just like ours is. And I don't know, it's kind of cool when you visit these towns and they tell you, this is what successful cities do. And we look at it now, eight years down the road, and we're doing it already. So would you agree with that statement?
I would say this, that in a perfect world, we would have everything open at the exact same time. But we don't live in a perfect world, so it is, let's get this done, this done, try to move everything forward. And so I think we have all the building blocks in place to, for anyone who's a naysayer about downtown or that area, just wait, like, just wait. I'm very excited for, for what's coming. We're going to have our train station downtown in two years. We're going to have 300 more units. The bank will be open this spring. We'll have an RFP for your consideration soon, too, on the Rimbach property across the street. That's another 200 units. Up at the Gateway Station, there's all this property that's just, you guys saw it when we were on the tour, just north of the Gateway Station's going to be mixed-use residential right there. Like, we have all the pieces. And, and I think part of the thing that I think that we have to come to terms with is, is that part of the draw of living by the train station is Chicago. It is. And that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing that we have people that maybe work and they do some of their fun in Chicago, but they want to come back to Hammond for all the benefits that we have here in Hammond. And that's, that's one of the things that, when you look at all the other places we've gone, there's a major metropolitan city. There's Denver, there's Pittsburgh, there's Chattanooga. Hammond is not, right now, a major metropolitan city. It's a great urban city. We have all these advantages, but Chicago is. And so that, we have to come to peace with that mindset that, hey, this could be really great for us, the fact that we can hop on a train and get to downtown in less than 20 minutes. And for the younger generation, and no, no disrespect to anybody in here, I'm not in this either, I'm not the younger generation, but they don't necessarily want a car. They don't necessarily want a car. They want to use public transportation. They want to be able to, to hop on a train and get to wherever they want to go. Or a bus, or a ride share when they can't get on one of those. So I am, to your point, Councilman Warple, I'm very excited about the direction that we're headed. And I think we do have many of the building blocks in place. I wish they were all, all energized right this moment, but, but we're getting there. And I see nothing but positive energy coming out of the city.
The point I'm making is, you know, growing up and living in this city for the 63 years I've been alive, I hear, I read and see a lot of criticism. One of them was something you brought up about the Shepherd Center, you know? Why pickleball? Well, I would go in there sometimes at night, and there'd be two or three people inside there just shooting baskets, and it's a fully staffed building.
Yeah.
And since that pickleball court's been there, I've seen 300 people a day. Like you said, it's a club, and residents can join, too. And you know, one another criticism I hear is, well, downtown Hammond will never be what it once was. Well, I don't think anybody expects it to be what it once was. It's just redeveloping it the right way. And when you hear all these experts from these other cities in economic development and all that tell you, this is what you need to do, we're doing it. And like, am I saying, going to declare it a success? No, not yet. But it's better than just letting it sit there with nothing down there, right? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Thank you.
All right.
Next up, rule of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 28th meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Your motion is second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claim dated October 24th, 2024, and ending with claims dated November 6th, 2024. Claim number 9328 through claim number 9818 inclusive in the amount of $3,971,577.84. I so move.
Second.
Your motion is second by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Vines.
Yes, I have three additional claims. Claim number 9819 in the amount of $500 for the school city of Hammond Skills for Life. Claim number 9820 in the amount of $100 for Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. Claim number 9821 in the amount of $100 for Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. And claim number 9822 in the amount of $200 for Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. I so move.
Motion to amend the claims is a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion on the amended claims? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. amended claims pass 8-0, 8-4-0 against, one absent. Motion on the claims as amended.
Make a motion to approve the claims as amended.
Second.
Your motion is second by Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Didn't we already have that motion, Cliff Colick?
The motion to amend that passed, I mean, the amendment passed, the original motion is on the floor as amended, with the originals, first and second.
Okay.
The second motion is not needed.
All right, we don't need that second motion. Roll call on the claims.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Claims passes 8-0. Next up, public hearings, we have none. Next up, communications. Everybody have any communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I wanted to just announce that Washington Irving Elementary School is hosting their winter coat drive and food drive. They're accepting coats of all sizes and condition, and any unopened or unexpired food items can be dropped off at the main office of the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I have a few items that I want to share. One is, of course, the YMCA opening that is in my district right now, despite Councilman Warple trying to re-district. Just want to invite everybody to sign up for a tour. You can do so on the YMCA's website, the Grand. They open fully on the 20th, which is next Wednesday, so excited for that. The second thing I want to announce is that two residents on Erie Street have communication from the Water Department. They have done a study in terms of, there were complaints about the water pressure on Erie Street, and there is an issue in a lot of the homes over there where they're going to switch out your meters for a larger model over the next couple of weeks. So if you get contacted by the Water Department, please respond so that they can come out and switch those out if you are having issues with your water pressure. And then lastly, just want to thank the rest of the council members who have contributed to our annual turkey giveaway. This is the fifth year that we are, no, fourth year, I keep forgetting, fourth year that we're doing this event. We started in 2021, so this is our fourth year. It will be Saturday, November 23rd at 9:00 a.m. in the parking lot of the Affilia Steam Center. This year, we were able to give out 200 turkeys. So if you are a family in need, please attend that. You have to be a Hammond resident, you have to show ID. It's a drive-through event, so we'll just place the turkey in your car after we verify your ID and your residency within the city. There are no early arrival, so we, hopefully, everybody will just arrive at 9:00 o'clock. It normally takes us 30, maybe 45 minutes to hand out all of the turkey, so it's a quick event. It is first come, first served, so please get there if you are interested in picking up a turkey. Like I said, once again, that's Saturday, November 23rd at 9:00 a.m. at the Affilia Steam Center parking lot, and you will enter off of Highland Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Alexander.
This Saturday, North Township will be doing their 16th Annual Coat Drive from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Wicker Park, where they'll be giving new coats for children. Children have to be present with their parent or guardian in order to receive one of those coats. So for those that are in need of a coat, I recommend that you make it over to Wicker Park this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. to get a coat for your child. But the child has to be present so they can make sure that the size fits.
Thank you. Any other? Just want to announce HC3 will be having their Frostyville event, the Hanson Community Center, 2823 Martha in Hessville. Be on Saturday, December 7th, from noon to 3:00 p.m. Be after the parade. Challenger Learning Center will be there. Winter Wonderland, Winter Wonder Lab, got raffles, Santa, elves, and face painting. Come and join for holiday shopping, treats, and entertainment. Thank you. Any other committee? Any other communications? Any other communications? Okay, next up, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 24-27 for third reading, final passage.
Thank you. Any other committee report?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, I will announce the community and crime watch meetings, but I believe the did not meet. Why am I drawing a blank?
The capital improvements.
Capital improvements, thank you very much. Did not meet, so there is no report. As for the community and crime watch meetings, Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, December 4th, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, December 3rd, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will meet December 19th. No, you will not, correct? Do you not meet?
In November, we meet, yes.
In November, but not December?
Not December.
Okay, okay, so scratch that. Okay. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, December 10th, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November 14th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. I encourage everyone to come out and find out tips about the holidays that are coming up and how we can protect ourselves. It is the season of giving, it's also the season of taking, so we need to protect ourselves because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance 24-27, sponsored by Councilman Kowinski, and ordinance authorizing the extension of the maturity of $39,000 variable rate demand for sewage and solid waste disposal revenue refunding bonds for Cargill Incorporated, project series number 2005 of the city of Hammond, Indiana. The execution and delivery of a first supplemental indenture of trust. The execution and delivery of a first amendment to loan agreement between Cargill Incorporated and said city and related matters.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I move for third reading and final passage of 24-27.
Second.
Your motion is second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
This is a $39 million bond that Cargill took out, and they're on the hook for the bond, not the city, but they're asking for an extension of five years regarding carrying the bond. And so they're going through the city as part of the process to get approval to request the extension. That's what we're doing here today. Thank you. Oh, by the way, all the money from that $39 million bond was put back into the Cargill facility in Hammond, per Adam Lawson, the facility manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Warple.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. 24, 27 passes 8-0.
That concludes the ordinance.
Next up, introduction of ordinances.
I am a ordinance 24-28, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance modifying Councilman Spitali, by an ordinance modifying the city of Hammond, and amending.
President. President for first and second reading.
President for first and second reading of council as a whole, committee meeting at 5:15 on November 25th, 2024.
Second.
Your motion is second. It's Councilman Tyler.
Some of the genesis of bringing this forward to the council's consideration actually came out of the Realtors' Breakfast. Councilman Spitali was there, and some of the feedback we received from, we had about 170 Realtors there, was that the previous amount of 2,500 was not enough to make any measurable difference in a down payment assistance program. So this was not generated from, directly from internal discussion, this was from outside stakeholders coming to us and saying, hey, for this program to have value, we need, we need to increase the amount. And the big news is, of course, we're, we're asking the council to consider to add in city employees as another encouragement for, for them and, and being consistent with our residency ordinance to be able to afford and purchase their first house in Hammond. Thank you.
What did the Realtors think of right amount of funds?
The 10,000 that's in front of you is the amount that was recommended. And this is, just for the financial piece, it's funded out of, out of gaming at 50,000 a year. We have 40,000 in that budget now, so if we end up having more qualified applicants in a year, we'll either have the option of, of the mayor allocating more gaming money, or we would go into some sort of waitlist process to the next year.
Thank you. Do we have somebody else that would like to speak on, on this?
Good afternoon, council. Like the chief of staff said, this came from the Realtors' Breakfast. A lot of feedback came from there. Currently, low income receives 2,500 for existing homes, and then new construction receives 3,500. And then this ordinance will also add full-time city employees, including the Water Department, Sanitary, and Port Authority, and increase the award amount to 10,000 for existing and new construction homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Counsel, one other point of clarification is, there's really two programs. This is the one that identifies city employees, teachers, firefighter, and police. That is what is in front of you. There's a separate program that's managed by HUD that is funded through federal dollars, which is income-based. And that's the one that anyone can apply for in the city, is the income-based down payment assistance. So that'll be handled through a separate process. That doesn't come in front of you guys because of the, the federal nature. So what's in front of you is for those categories I, I mentioned. But separately, we'll be increasing the amount of the HUD down payment assistance for those who are financially disadvantaged as well.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Miller. On page two, it says, in addition to income-based eligibility, is there also income-based eligibility for police officers, firefighters, and educational professionals?
They're not automatically dis, there's nothing in this that would make them automatically disqualified. The reality of the situation is, most of them would not qualify because they make too much. Those income guidelines are not set by the city, they're set by HUD through the home program. Um...
home program, um, but that could increase in the future, so we didn't want to cap it and say that they were excluded, because if those guidelines from the feds increased, they, we wouldn't want to say they're disqualified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Warple. Yes.
Raichos.
Yes. Passes on first, 24, 28, passes first and second reading, eight to zero. That concludes, uh, introduction of ordinances. Next up, resolutions, I have none. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Zalinas.
Hmm, I wanted to shine some light on a, a Hammond program that, uh, I recently took part in, myself and Councilmember Dan Spitali. It's, uh, through the Hammond Police Department. It's titled the Citizens Police Academy. It's a eight-week program, and it covered, uh, trainings in all aspects of law enforcement. Topics such as police ethics, traffic stops, self-defense tactics, and tasers, uh, crime scene processing and fingerprinting, shoot, don't shoot simulations, narcotics enforcement, de-escalation of situations, community affairs, jail procedures, and there were demonstrations from K-9, SWAT, and riot teams. This program, um, really shined light on the different layers that the police department, uh, officers go through. And, um, I know, me personally, it, uh, it showed me a new level of, uh, just commitment that these officers make to our community, um, in the careers that they chose. And I wanted to highlight some of the officers that were a part of the program and say thank you. Um, Chief Shore, Assistant Chief Long, Lieutenant Thomas, Captain Servery, Sergeant Eby Gonzalez, Lieutenant Mickey, Sergeant Holbrook, Lieutenant Coulter, Sergeant Matanovich, Sergeant Erini, Captain Bunner, Sergeant Peterson, Sergeant DeBoer, Sergeant Mahoy, Sergeant Taylor, Captain Grasha, Sergeant Clark, Sergeant Larnick, Lieutenant Markert, Sergeant Quick, Captain Maldonado, Sergeant Cook, and Lieutenant Vaughn. And, uh, K-9, and the K-9 was, K-9 was Eros. Eros was pretty slick. Um, he was able to find all of the different, uh, packages, uh, that were hidden, and his demonstration alone was, uh, pretty phenomenal. But, uh, I want to say thank you, and I encourage any, uh, Hammond resident, or any, actually any resident, that, uh, is interested in seeing the inner workings and the behind-the-scenes dealings that our officers, uh, undergo, and some of the new technologies that are available and that they utilize, uh, every day to, uh, take a look at this program. Uh, I had a phenomenal time, and I know Dan really enjoyed it as well. So I just want to say thank you overall to the Hammond Police Department.
Thank you, Councilman Zalinas. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move our December 23rd council meeting to December 30th.
Second.
Your motion is second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. We have public expression. First up, Lori Zolno.
Hi, Lori Zolno, 7142 Forest. Good evening, everyone. Uh, as of late in my travels around, specifically my neighborhood, I have noticed a number of fire hydrants that are locked out. There are red banding on them with padlocks. I presume that means they are non-functioning. Uh, this is of concern to me, particularly since on October 22nd, there was a fire in Chicago Heights. It ended up with a loss of two homes, and part of it was non-functioning fire hydrants. My understanding is, they had to go 1,000 yards to find a functioning fire hydrant. Um, it's just something that needs to be looked at. Uh, we don't think about them till we need them, and we, when we need them, we need them. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, George Stoya. Thank you, George. Next up, Nathan Reader.
Counsel, Alex, good to see you. I haven't seen you in 25 years since we were in Cleveland for the indoor soccer tournament. So it's cool to see you today. Uh, I, I wanted to come talk to the council today, you know, in the past month, I've been to the Realtor Breakfast, and I've watched the last two budget meetings here, and then I saw the Memorial Park meeting, and it bothered me. So I wanted to come and dress the council today. I've only been here twice in the last 20 years. The first time was about 15 years ago, and Dan Rippey was still on the council, and you guys were talking about rental registrations, where it should be 80 or 20 dollars a unit, and you guys laughed at me when I was, came up here, the meeting too late to even have a say in it, and, uh, but I just said, you know, that it's gonna, it's gonna be something that is, is not beneficial to the owners that hire me as a professional management company, and sure enough, the state agreed and capped the rental registrations at 5 dollars a unit. And the second time was about six years ago, I listed a house for sale, and as soon as I put it on the MLS, the city called me and said they want to inspect the property and force the owner who listed their home for sale to rip out their finished basement because it was not permitted to be built. It's a point of sale inspection, something they do in Illinois often, but not in Indiana. We met with the city after I spoke with the council, and it stopped. So I wanted to come today because something's been bothering me for about two years now, since we were at the Clark High School Football Field Meeting, talking about whether we should turn Clark High School Football Field into 30 single-family homes, or maybe a couple townhomes. And the mayor was getting hammered that day by about 100 people, similar to most of the council's age, that were in that room, saying that they've lived here for 50, or 60, or 75 years, and they don't want to see any homes built on this land, and if it is, they just want those 3, 4, 500,000 dollar single-family homes built there. They don't want those people who would buy a 200,000 dollar condo, that's why they said, "those people." And I said, "Mayor, I was just at the Realtor Convention in Orlando," and they had a speaker there who said, who wrote the book, The Color of Law, Richard Rothstein, and he says that this is modern-day redlining that's going on, and it bothered me. But I said, "Mayor, I also heard from another speaker from Up for Growth," and he said, "It's up to the Realtors to show up to these community meetings to make sure that that's not happening, to say what needs to be said at those community meetings so the housing gets built where it needs to be built." But the Realtors don't want to do that, and after 15 years, I've resigned from those boards to focus on North Township, and I've started working with this group called Strong Towns, and we started a local chapter called Strong Towns, Indiana. And I'm here to tell you, if you promote this Memorial Park meeting, or whatever you want to build housing, and you want to hold a public meeting for whatever reason, I will show up and say these things, so that the mayor doesn't have to take the heat. And I would appreciate if some of the older folks in the council would stand up, so our 21-year mayor who saved the city doesn't have to take the heat from the 76, 70-plus-year-old people who show up there and say, "We don't need housing." Well, the median value in Hammond's gone from 60 to 175,000 dollars in the past 10 years. It's tripled. That's never happened before in the city. In Memorial Park, those homes would sell for no more than 30,000 a house after 2008, and it's just recently tripled. So while those people are right and protesting something happening in their, in their neighborhood, I don't have much time. I want to meet with you guys. I brought some information on the infill program from South Bend, you can take that with you. They've, they've built 120 homes on their infill lots, we have 500 infill lots in the city of Hammond, I learned at the Realtor Breakfast. And I brought a book for you, The High Cost of Free Parking, to talk about all the infill lots we have on our major thoroughfares, that nobody should complain about housing being built, because it's a commercial thoroughfare. But I, I've, I've offered to meet with some of you in the past, I know you personally, please come to my office, I have a presentation I can give you. I want to tell you what's going on in this housing market, because I've watched it for the last 20 years, and we have quite an opportunity to build some new assessed value and fix our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Your motion to adjourn?